Started around sort of how do we sort of look at different departments? In this case athletics more specifically in terms of the pay to play fees and other barriers that might sort of be impacting the looking at that through an equity lens and sort of seeing what barriers are in place, what can we take out to hopefully increase and diversify and continue to like really make these programs both equitable and open for everyone. And so the first step of that was eliminating the pay to play fees, which was awesome. And what was also interesting about that is when the report was given last year. And I think everybody both Tigerd and Tuolton sides agreed it didn't quite have as much of thank you, Zinnia, the significant of a difference in impact as they we all sort of thought it would. And so and not to say that it didn't work and it didn't make a difference, but the next question was where do we go from here and what else is in the way and what else can we do to kind of continue to either recognize those systems or those processes or those barriers and then how do we take those away? So this is kind of an update to that. And then I have a couple of questions for us kind of thinking about moving forward. So I will hand it over to this team to kind of walk us through.
Perfect. Thank you, Chair. Welcome, everyone, tonight. I'm so, you know, excited to have our team here to talk a little bit about some progress and some updates about the impact of pay to play, but most importantly, the impact of studying barriers within a system and what we can do to support next steps. And so, next slide, please. Our time together will be a brief introduction and background information about pay to play and how that came about. In the slide deck, I have, I think, linked two videos. One video presenting was a an artifact from this work where students shared their they did a survey for the impacts of pay to play fees and also just engagement in general within extracurricular activities and sports. And so there's that. And then there is the proposal that we are implementing today, which is the elimination of pay to play fees and $100,000 for transportation supports and for extracurricular activities, for equity grants to support diversification of participation. We'll talk a little so David and I will lead that section and then we'll share a little bit about some lessons learned and then our athletic equity coordinators from Tigerd and Tuolton will share. They'll have about 10 minutes each to discuss kind of what they're what they've seen and observed and then we'll open the space for discussion. Does that work for folks? Okay, next slide, please. So just a little bit of background in 2019, 2020, students worked with the board chair and vice chair at the time, looking at a proposal to eliminate pay to play fees and included what the presentation that I shared with earlier. Leading that work was our CFO, David Moore, Tracy Rose, and as I said, our board chair and vice chair. So I'll offer a time for David, do you have anything to add for that that time?
Good evening, everyone. The other thing to add that was Zinnia said was the student involvement because this was initially proposed in 2018, 19. And we didn't get it executed in the budget to remove the pay to play fees in 2019, 20. But in fact, this work session and the working from home last week totally reminds me of that time because we put it on hold until the 2000 budget season and our we had some pretty passionate board members. A lot of the kids that brought this to the table were graduates in 2019. So there's a new group of students that have to pick it up the next school year. And but our board didn't let us forget and kept the foot, the pedal to metal, so to speak. And the reason why it's it's like yesterday is because working from home, it's first year we've had to pass a budget from home, have the budget meeting. And I remember there being a lot of cheering and applause and I can remember sitting in my kitchen and facilitating that meeting and having a lot of people like you there, which usually we don't get a lot of people at our budget committee meetings. So it was it's like I said, it's just like yesterday that we're back here and they're talking about what the next steps is, what the meeting areas.
And then that takes us to the advocacy and allocation of funds for 20 in the 2020, 2021 year. So David, do you want to talk a little bit about that and the allocation? I know that you also provided some information with us as well.
Yeah, so.
We learned we that was the first year of implement of the initiative and how and when it came to effect. As you know, that was also the time when we started back school after distance learning. And there we had heard not only from staff, students, the stress that that had in the community. And so that that then highlighted that, you know, having resources, but also without infrastructure and supports made it very difficult to get a lot of that information out to students and the community so that it was used in the way that we were hoping. And then 22, 23 was, I think, the first year that we actually got a chance to see some of the potential impacts. And I know that our coordinators will share a little bit more about that as they share their presentation. And one of the things that we learned about that, and again, thanks to Pedro and Ted in bringing up promising practices of having an athletic equity coordinator and what that might do to support the ongoing improvements of these efforts. And so creating a support structure for that was critical. And then this year, having Tori join the team, we can see through coordinated efforts how we can collectively advocate and support improvements as well. And they'll share a little bit more about that. And then our goal today is to talk about what next. Okay, next slide. So these are at the district level insights from our board meetings, from our discussion. And I realized that we didn't do like full introductions of who's at the table. So I want to take a pause here and just kind of go around a little bit because this is connected because I do want to maybe start with Jacob DeGraw, who's our chair of our EAC, because a lot of the work has also been tucked into various infrastructures that are also being developed too. So if you wouldn't mind, Jacob, starting and then we'll just go around and say who you are and the lens that you represent.
Thank you, Zinnia. Yeah, I'm Jacob DeGraw. I'm Chair of the Educational Equity Advisory Committee. And we have multiple subcommittees from the EAC and one of them is the Equity Funds Dispersal Subcommittee, where our responsibility is to review grant applications for $100,000 in funds for extracurricular activities that are outside of athletics. So this pay to play stuff that we're talking about today is, is my understanding, for athletics only. So what we review is for stuff outside of athletics, such as providing musical instruments or uniforms for marching band and that sort of stuff. So again, trying to increase equitable access to funds and extracurricular activities outside of athletics.
Hello, I'm Pedro Marquez and I am the Athletic Equity Coordinator at Tuolton High School.
Hi, I'm Tori Alderman. I am Athletic Equity Coordinator at Tigerd High and also a guidance counselor.
Ryan Taylor, Associate Principal, Athletic Director, Tigerd High School.
Reema Hussain, Tigerd High School Representative.
Brianna Castellanos-McGuff, Tigerd High School Student Representative.
Owen Albrecht, also Tigerd High School Student Representative.
Olivia Trone, and Talton High School Student Representative.
Tristan Urban, Board Chair.
Living Thomas, Vice Chair.
Lily Story, oh my gosh, Lily Story, Tuolton Student Rep.
Dr. Surikey Smith, Superintendent.
Kristen Miles, Board Member.
Crystal Weston, Board Member.
David Moore, CFO.
Dr. Lisa McCall, Assistant Superintendent.
Len Reed, HR Director.
Susan Bernard, IT Director.
Sarah Mertesit, Controller. And I was part of the group that met with the students both before COVID-19.
And I'm Jill Zerschmid, Board Member and your eye in the sky.
Thank you, Jill, and you were not the last one. My name is Zinnia and I'm the Director of Equity and Inclusion. So again, thank you for everyone's presence today. And I want to share a little bit about the things that we've learned at the district level, given a lot of these meetings that we've had with one another, as well as the work that has occurred behind the scenes. So some of the things that we've learned has been the impact of past practices. In the presentations that we saw and heard from students, as well as like ongoing conversations with students today, the impact of the waiver process. Although allowed accessibility for students, it did impact their social emotional wellness and well-being to be able to have to advocate for participation rather than having that be an ability to do so without barriers. And that impact of made students feel othered and also deterred students from accessing the funds itself. Adding also the fact that we don't have disaggregated data on some of the participation impacts, the implementation of eliminating barriers and change and so forth. So in equity work, without information, you can't do the four I's. You can't implement initiatives, interventions, and/or investments. So with so that's part of the things that we learned in doing a lot of the study this last few these last few years. And then we also recognize that context matters. Eliminating fees does not address impacts of cut and non-cut sports and lack of staffing to support students participating. And we'll hear a little bit more from our coordinators, you know, signing up is just the first step. What are the other, you know, domino effects of impact that students are facing or the barriers for participation? And then also understanding upstream impacts are not addressed with just funding at the high school level. So student voice and perception data indicate the lack of confidence and experience in sports. There's there was a lot of conversation during the community budget process around middle school sports and that no one is really overseeing that and that eliminating fees does not address those upstream barriers for students. And then also looking at the holistic vision of changes required. Funding without additional resources saw the following, and I know that this was expressed during the last few board work sessions that we had was lack of communication and supports for outreach to historically underserved communities, lack of additional supports to eliminating barriers to participation. Pay to play pay to play fees were just one of the barriers that our students presented on and our coordinators will share about. And then accountability and collaboration structures were not set up to support the this investment. So having money without a plan makes it very difficult to see the outcomes that you want to see. So what you value requires, you know, a measurement. And so without people helping to keep a pulse on that, it made it very difficult to move much of the efforts. And then other costs and barriers are impacting participation. So there've been a lot of discussion around coaches and for unified sports, investment in more opportunities for younger students to build skills and exposure to sports and then accessibility to gear and materials for participation. So those are the district level insights. And now I'm going to turn it over to Tigerd High to share a little bit about their participation data and then Tuolton will go and then we'll have each of the coordinators share a little bit about their context.
Okay, next slide, please. What we put together here is participation data for the last four and actually say four, six, seven years. And what you can see, I have an asterisk by 2021, just because that was our COVID year. So there's a natural dip there. But total participation for all sports at Tigerd High, 907, 774, 947, 916. And then so far, we we have increased our participation pretty dramatically in fall and winter of this school year. One thing I want to point out is just the difference between winter of last year and winter of this year. And that's when we can really gauge apples to apples there. And and when we started the equity work at Tigerd in athletics, we jumped up quite a few students. We added women's wrestling, which is great, but we also had a record number of sport registrations this fall or this winter. And I think that's in part due to some of the efforts that we were doing at the high school with QR codes and massive advertising campaign to get kids signed up. Unfortunately, winter has probably besides wrestling, the other sports are cut. And so a lot of those, some of those kids, about 50 of those kids got cut, 40 some cut cut, I think. But they are able to go, it's mostly in basketball, mostly in boys' basketball. They are able to participate in rec basketball. Next slide, please. This, what I really want us to focus on, the upper left quadrant is Tigerd High's demographics for for this school year. And if we focus on the winter, let's focus on winter sports, that you can look at fall and fall and winter combined. But if we look at winter sports, you'll see that there's the breakdown of our demographics and 17.8% Hispanic, 12.7% 12 or more, 3.8, it looks like. So small. 3.8 for Black, African American, and so forth. And then next slide. So that's for winter of this school year. And this is 22, 23. If you focus on winter, just so we're comparing the same type of sports season and same demographic, you can see that last year, we we really had a decrease in our demographic, wasn't matching our school demographic super well. We dipped down, the Hispanic participation numbers dipped down to 13% and Black, African American dipped down to 1.8%. So just from last year during the winter to this year, we have closed the participation gap essentially. And and we can provide more data. There is a file that I've linked back on the previous slide that is a file of all our disaggregated data going back to 2019, 2020.
So next slide, please. This is our information from Tuolton High School for the last three years. We still need to update spring numbers, but we we've kind of done like a little rollercoaster where we had a few athletes come out in 2020 to 2021. And then 2021, 22, we increased our numbers in total. 2023, we're still working on that spring number, so we don't have a total for that. But our trend is that it's going that it went back down in total participation for that year. And so one thing that we have kind of looked into is going back to where we started and taking a look at the students, student athletes who were out for a sport but didn't return back. And as far as like disaggregated data, for our application, we don't ask for that information. So that's something that we're probably going to look into adding that for for the athletic form.
And I think aligned with improving and coordinating efforts would be to take a look at how we use student ID numbers to be able to get some of that disaggregated data. So I think as we welcome Tori onto the team, being able to have those huddles and review that, I think, for the next time that we come together, we'll be able to bring that forward for the Tuolton side as well. And then Pedro, you know, has been a part of the the work of what does that look like to support outreach and connection with students, to support them in accessing some of the some of the sports as well. And so Pedro is going to share a little bit about, you know, the context at Tuolton.
So our work started in 2019, 2020, again, with recruitment and retention of our athletes. And we saw a number that had dropped, especially in the fall, with the athletes that were coming out. And so then in 2020, 21, we asked for some funds. This was the year of our of our after pandemic. And so we wanted to establish some kind of fund and the OSA had or has a fund for equity and diversity grant. And so with these monies, we've been able to help some of those sports that aren't necessarily fully funded, one being cheer. In order to start up your cheer, there is it's quite more of a more expensive than other sports because they're a year-long program rather than just one season. And so we were able to help a few of the students establish their accounts and start moving forward with them. In 2021, 22, one thing that we really came across is because our our form was only in English. And so we had to find ways so that we could other other non-English families could access it. We were able to add a a translation button on there and it could translate, I think it's about 53 languages through a Google app that you just press a button and it translates the page for you. So that was something that we were able to do. And then also in 2022, we looked at some things that that were helping or that kind of hindered some of our fall athletics. And one was having tryouts in the summertime before school started. And so with that, we were able to create and look at some of our girls' soccer program. And we were able to establish a JV2 team after school had started. And so their program was able to bring on another coach and help that program out. Also, in 2021, 22, we brought in a girls' novice golf program that wasn't necessarily through sports. I think Dr. Stu came out and had a couple of sessions out with our girls that year, but it was something where students who weren't even thinking about golf, and it was mainly targeted towards the females. There was about five that came pretty consistent to to those practices. And that was really a successful program for for those five girls. In 2020, 22, 23, we started our girls' wrestling program and we were also able to hire a female coach to come out. And that has been really strong for us to have a female coach on so that girls feel more confident to be able to come out and wrestle. Next slide, please. Again, by year, these are some of the lessons we've learned. In 2019, 22, again, we were looking at the decline in participation due to pandemic things going on. In 2021, 20 or 2021 or 2020, 21, we saw a few incidents of hate speech. So with coaches, athletes, parents, and myself, we were able to to input or implement some we sort of practices within those teams and just keep it kind of, not just keep it, but work with it within the certain things that happened on those teams. 2021, 22, we learned about our lack of transportation, even though now we have kind of established some some protocols to have transportation. You know, potential athletes were not able to make tryout teams or times because of transportation, whether it was in the summer or it was in the winter for the late practices. Those were something that we saw that some students or some athletes were deterred from coming out because of those. Also, something we saw is that more participants means we need more coaches and we need to offer more than just the three teams. We need to look at offering a JV2 team or even an additional team other than JV2. 2023, we kind of got in the flow. Once we had established our translation button, we also saw that a lot of newcomers, meaning immigrant students to our our district, didn't have the same accessibility to registration. And so if someone came from, you know, a non-English speaking family, it was really hard for them to to know the system or get to know the system. So they missed a lot of those tryouts when that was when it was that opportunity. And so especially with those cut, those limited sports or cut teams, like in the winter, we saw that those numbers go down, it was even more impactful then. And so this year, we're looking at fundraising. Fundraising is more needed because of the expansion of teams. And then also, you know, for us is that for Tuolton, we need to kind of find a way to implement that or find that desegregation data, whether it's adding it to the form, the athletic form, or trying to find it through student ID numbers.
And I again, I want to say thank you to Pedro and Ted for the work that they've done to support some of the lessons learned, which we can bring in with our colleague Tori and and Ryan from Tigerd High. As Tori goes and gets ready to present her section, one thing that, you know, we just learned even right now is the accessibility of being able to access some of that data as well and making sure that Pedro, as the Athletic Equity Coordinator at Tuolton, should be able to gain access to synergy in that sense so that he can do his work. So I think that was something that came up as well as we talked about the the data sources.
Can you guys hear okay? So I just recently came on board back in September in the athletic equity role. And so when I did so, I kind of needed to wrap my head around what what is this work that I need to dive into? So I I sat down with Ryan and we talked about my goals in this position after speaking with Zinnia too and looking at the job description. And so personally for me, I wanted to to bolster unified sports. And so we've we've made some great strides already with that. We had a fall season soccer. We are currently getting underway with basketball tomorrow. What? Well, today they're practicing, but tomorrow they play at Tuolton, 4 o'clock, if you guys want to join. And then in spring, we plan to have unified track, track and field. Another thing we talked about is partnering with the OSAA Foundation to tap into some resources that are right in our backyard. Not only resources athletically, but funds are there too. A big thing that we need at Tigerd is we're doing a good job with communication. I just think it needs to be linked and systemic and broad and and make sense to the users. I just think it needs to be linked and systemic and broad and, and make sense to the users. So I'll hit on this in a little bit, but we're working on improving our systemic messaging. And then finally, um, probably the biggest goal for me uh in this role is to look at uh how to improve participation for all of our students and how to improve access to participation for our students.
Hey, Tori. Oh, that was loud. Before you go on, will you just, so we're all on the same page, define Unified Sports for everybody?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, Unified Sports is uh students with disabilities pairing up with their um peer tutors or their athletic teammates. So there, it's a combined team. Um, and this is a picture of our unified team this year. Uh, we actually had Chris Germano come out and do a media day for our Unified Sports Basketball Team. It's in the media guide. Um, this is a sport at Tigerd High School. It is not a halftime little game that we're going to play in front of, of fans. They, they need to access sports just like all other students. So this, this was super fun, one of the highlights of my, my year, probably one of the highlights of my career right there, participating in that, in that day. Um, so back to that fourth goal of participation and improving access. What I sat down and did was uh poll the students. We, we got to get student voice in this and ask them what, what is in the way um of you participating, if anything? Um, why do we do this? Well, it took me about two minutes to pull hordes of research on why athletics is, is so beneficial for our kids. Um, and I just highlighted some of those benefits. A stronger sense of self-confidence and building relationships with other, expanded capacity for empathy, how, how their actions affect others, and of course lifelong fitness habits. Uh, another study said it increases school connectedness and more frequent school attendance. Another study looked at uh higher levels of school engagement, improves emotional regulation, higher levels of physical activity and important life skills like teamwork, confidence, communication, goal setting. And you know, coming out of COVID, this is, this is huge. That uh emotional regulation that we've seen really ha- have an impact on our community. Um, this, that study at the top there really looked more at lower socioeconomic status of kids and how it provides a sense of purpose for them and belonging. Obviously, going back to connectedness, um provides a place for them to be after hours when a lot of those kids are latchkey kids. Um, and that last study there uh sh- uh showed participation in team sports resulted in a higher GPA for both high school boy and girl athletes. They're fifteen percent more likely to attend college, tend to earn significantly higher incomes, earn up to forty percent higher test scores. If it's not related, I don't know what else is. It, it is parallel with our goals and our mission statements across our district. So it, I'm preaching to the choir here, but the benefits are, are many. And our charge here is to make sure there's opportunity for all of our kids. Um, so I presented this back in October to our head coaches at one of Ryan's meetings that he holds. And I asked the coaches, after presenting this survey, to think of one thing they could do to bring to the table in their respective coaching role or their teaching role. And, and kind of be thinking, be reflective on that piece. So back in October, polled, surveyed over four hundred PE students in semester one. So it's a, a very random sample of Tigerd High School students. And here's what they said. Do you participate in or plan to participate in a sport or athletic club at Tigerd High this school year? Nearly fifty-eight percent said yes. That's fantastic. That's, that's great news. We have nearly fifty-eight percent planning on or currently participating in a sport of the four hundred we surveyed. However, when I surveyed over fifty students from our affinity group, groups, um, that drops about twenty percent. So we have some work to do there. Uh, looking at the affinity groups, so I broke this down and some of our groups, I just didn't get a lot of data, only maybe two or three responses because they weren't quite organized yet. Um, but got a lot of information from kind of big five over there, Black Student Union, Metta, GSA, Pacific Islander and Asian Student Union. And you can see, we have a lot of our students in our affinity groups aren't participating or they're kind of on the fence with participating. Nearly eighty-three percent, actually more than that, sorry, only seven percent of our Pacific Islander affinity group reported that they are participating or plan to participate. Only seven percent. But some of them are very interested. They're just not feeling probably confident or the, we'll get into the barriers later. But that's, that is so low for that group. And it's almost the exact opposite for our Asian Student Union. So those kids are dialed in. They're participating. They have access. So I just, this helps inform us where we may, maybe need to dig in and start doing some work. Um, when they expanded on what sport they were interested in um or currently participating in, uh, you can see, I'll throw in baseball there, but the big five, what do they all have in common? Baseball, basketball, football, soccer, track and field. What do all those sports have in common? There's, there's a sound program at the youth level. Our community has sound opportunities at the youth level. Um, it may cost some, but that doesn't surprise me that we see that kind of participation in those sports. And so it makes me start to think and it should get our heads turning a little bit. Well, maybe we need to resurrect some middle school sports. Um, maybe no-cut sports to start seeing some of these other sports uh see some increase in participation. The other thing I noticed from this is that soccer and volleyball have very high maybes. And I think it goes back to what Pedro mentioned earlier, uh tryouts are in summer. And we're just missing some of those kids. They probably wanted to do it. And they just missed the boat and it was summertime and they weren't aware of registration. Um, I just threw this in here because some of our kids reported other things besides the traditional OSA sanctioned sports. There's lots of different activities that our kids are doing and it's not always um within the box, right? So sometimes we can help ourselves think creatively by listening to the voice of the students. I, I was really surprised at how many kids said badminton. They would love to be on a badminton team. And our affinity group, I didn't put their answers up here, but many were interested. Metta and Pacific Islanders are interested in men's volleyball. And that is a, an emerging OSA sanctioned sport. So that could be something that Tigerd and Tuolotin thinks about um bringing on board soon. Okay, so this is the heart of the survey. Are there any barriers to participation for you and/or your family? Check all that apply. So listed cost, and obviously pay-to-play is no more. So cost means extraneous costs like equipment and gear, those type of things, trainings that they have to do. Transportation, can't get to and from practices, time commitment, was not aware of registration, don't have insurance. It seems like other players um are a higher ability. So that's a confidence question there. Um, family obligations, missed tryout window, cannot do the fundraising, and then no barriers at all. Um, so this, this is interesting. The PE group, fifty-eight point two percent said there's no barriers to participation. You ask our affinity group though, and that, that drops fourteen percent, forty-four point seven percent said there's no barriers for them. Okay? So that almost directly correlates with participation. Remember, uh fifty-seven point seven percent of our PE group participates or plans to participate? It correlates with how they're feeling about the barriers, perceived or real, whatever, whatever it is, that's how they're feeling. Okay, so when we looked at barriers individually, this is how it, it mapped out for our P- PE group. And again, this is four hundred and fourteen students were surveyed. So it's a, it's a really good random sample. Um, cost is still up there. And I know this presentation doesn't talk about pay-to-play specifically, but this can kind of inform our discussion later about pay-to-play. Cost is still a barrier for some kids. Transportation is a barrier. Um, I, I find it really interesting though, time commitment and family obligations, kind of put those together. But that's about twenty-eight percent um said time commitment. They just don't think they have time to do a sport. But I feel like if we talked to them, they would realize they probably do have time to do a sport and it would help with time management skills, responsibility, structuring their time, um, getting things done when they have to get things done. Um, some of the other things we're working on as a s- as a school, registration process, uh missed tryout window, and I know Pedro's working on those things at Tuolotin. And I find it really interesting, confidence and ability, that's a good chunk of the pie right there. They just aren't, they're nervous. They, they have to put themselves out there, right? Going out for a sport and possibly getting cut is, is a scary venture. When you look at our affinity group, the exact same percentage for confidence and their perceived ability level. Kids are kids across the board. They all have fears, anxieties, excitement. But I think with that chunk of the pie, the confidence piece, that's our charge, charge in the building to really get out there and start talking to kids. Um, the other thing I wanted to point out with the affinity group is the time commitment, family obligations, that's thirty-nine percent. So we need to look at that. That's a bigger barrier for them than our random PE sample. Okay, got to get going here. We disaggregated the data for our coaches. Um, matching it to, you know, showed our demographic at Tigerd High School and then just wanted coaches to see what their demographic was for their sport. And we have that in a file, but um I think it's just good that coaches know where they stand with who they have coming out and maybe who isn't coming out. Um, when we expanded on students uh and their barriers, it was telling. Some religions can't wear the uniform provided. Like, I've been leaning towards doing track, but then I would have to pay for new shoes and spikes to run in events. It's just I don't have the courage to test myself sometimes. I have a lot of homework to do. I want to go to college in Canada. I wanted to get As and Bs in all my classes. I go to church every Sunday. I wouldn't like to skip it specifically because I'm taking my confirmation classes. Somebody just needs to tell her they don't play on Sunday. And she could still do all these things. We don't have a lot of headgear and the headgear we do have doesn't have our logo. These are what kids are saying. I started playing basketball much more recently compared to other players. I don't have as much experience nor as much ability as the other players on the team. I wasn't here for tryouts. I was out of the country and I didn't know I needed a physical to join. We can address that. I joined the school late, so I don't know anything about the signup. I don't want to bring the team down by being a new and not as good player. That's pretty common. If my family needs, I would have to miss practice because I have to help since the passing of my mother. I wish we could just talk to that kid, find that kid. And here's a response from Manasa, which I really, a Manasa member, I, I think this sums up everything. Money and being able to pay for equipment or clothing is a huge issue that is widely neglected. Several other students have more experience because of advantages such as having lived in this area their whole life, being able to afford or be connected to use sports or having connections with coaches. Tryouts also aren't advertised as much as they should be and athletes who could try out aren't made aware of the opportunity. An issue I have dealt with personally is commuting, early practices and transportation. Although it comes with the sport and I understand that, it's inequitable and prevents me from being able to reach my full potential. Pretty articulate answer there. Uh, we asked how we're doing with communication. Um, we're, we're doing well. I think we just have to sync things and I, I like the idea of a whole year calendar, easy to find information. Um, other things that kids suggested when I asked them, have spirit themes for all sports, not just football. More accessible practice schedules, snacks for students staying after school or late. Our, our dance coach started doing that and she said, man, it's changed the mood tremendously. Make announcements and flyers to give out. Men's sports is prioritized over women's. That was mentioned six times. Maybe an assembly on all the different sports. Make it easy to find out how to join a sport or team. Advertise all sports regardless of type or level. If I wanted to sign up for a sport, who do I speak to? This informs us how, how to move forward. And our last question, has anyone ever talked to you, just simply talked to you about joining a sport? The exact same percentage, fifty-seven point seven percent. We asked our affinity group, thirty-eight point eight percent. You could hear a pin drop when we said this to the coaches and our tennis coach said, that's sad. And it is. It's sad, but it, it gives us a challenge. And if we don't do something about this right here, I don't know why, why we're in this room. Um, there's a lot of good going on at, at Tigerd. And when we asked them, who talked to you, it's all across the board. It's all sorts of people talk to them. It's not just the coaches, it's teachers, it's friends, it's neighbors, it's grandmas. It's due to back to school night, okay? But our kids are listening and they're paying attention. And then there's some kids that just, uh, nobody's talked to me. So let's try to talk to these kids. Final thoughts, forty-two point two percent replied no or maybe to sport. That's a big group to grab. We can intentionally grab that group and an even greater group for our affinity members. So we need to do some thoughtful um organizing and planning around that. Barriers, I think some of our barriers just need to be tweaked or we need to just think a little creatively with some of these things to help break down the barriers and build upon the good. They, they thrive when they are seen. Our students thrive. And so let's get out there and get them involved. I'm trying to go fast. So asking the coaches, what is your one thing? How are you going to hit the forty-two point three percent? Ask them to think about what I presented to them, uh decide what their one thing is, and many of them have more than one thing. And connect with me or others in the building to uh put it into action. And we can move the dial on this if everybody stepped up and did one thing. I'm going to ask the same of you here tonight. Consider ways to break down our students' perceived barriers and maybe think openly, differently and creatively about how we come to the table and make some impactful decisions here. Uh, the one things are adding up, I'm going to go through quickly, winter workouts for everyone. Those are initials of people that did that. Unified support, uh just it, practice times and games, QR codes for registration, website updating, OSA student assistance, joint basketball media day, demographics by sport, the bark running trail, Chris McIsaac's working on. Our trainer is working on concussion management protocol, snacks before practice. Uh, we've applied to be a star school, middle school sports and Eric Nessie, we, we're, we're talking about it. And the Tiger Dead, which I want to give a little shout out to Darren Bernard for, for really helping make this happen. for, for really helping make this happen. We secured some space and a portable. Wasn't easy. There was a ton of furniture in there. And so the Tiger Den is going to be the athlete's closet, kind of like a carrying closet for gently used sports gear and equipment for our kids. What's that? The Tiger Den is up and running. We've served one kid. And it's a matter of getting coaches and staff to refer. So it's, it's ready to go though. We have lots of gear in there and it's been in our newsletters. And it's, we could probably get it out for donations and that type of thing.
Yeah, and actually that was a really great transition because I know that we were hoping to hold some time for discussion. So I'm wondering if we can make that transition now?
Perfect.
Okay, so Chair, where would you like to go next?
I mean, and I realize we are almost done with what we wanted to do in terms of time wise. And if you want to go a little bit after we can, I mean, I feel like we could talk about this for another two hours and it would be wonderful because I have all sorts of thoughts and ideas and questions and, and I'm sure my colleagues here do as well. So for you, I mean, I think this is probably going to be a partially putting a pin in it so we can continue this conversation because I feel like, my whole thing is I think we need to bring back middle school sports. So I'll put my cards all out on the table. And I think a survey question that would be interesting is of all kids that are surveyed, regardless of if they were cut or not cut, we don't know that. But how many participants, for people that are trying out, how many played a rec, a club, a private sport? And I think that's the disparity that we're all seeing is, and I would be the same way. I would not want to play a high school sport having never played that before, particularly a cut sport. And so I think part of my conversation wants to go towards how can we creatively and in a budget friendly way, bring back middle school sports? And I think the other linking piece is all of the benefits of athletics also are true for liberal arts. And so how do we also equitably fund those things? And those are all really big conversations. So I'm also asking you, where do you want to go from here?
Yeah, I think that, I wonder, there was a lot of information here, but it is also information that you all had requested the last time that we were together. And so I feel like, again, we would not have been able to answer those questions that you had last year without our colleagues here, right? And the work that they do locally. And I think one of the things that I would love to have maybe is, you heard a lot of information. Information without processing can go whoop, right? So I'm wondering for our, our board and our student reps, like after hearing some of that, what are, what's like the first thought that you have? And then maybe we can wrap our time together because as our CFO had shared, this was a portion of two other components that we have not yet talked about. And so the reason why I had, we had our chair from the EAC is because that is part of the conversation that I'm hoping that we have later when we have our quarterly check-ins with our equity audits and stuff like that, which would include that information. So if we can just go do that, I think that would be a good summation.
Okay, thank you. I guess I, there's a lot of things that are going through my mind. And basically the bottom line is, is the program working, right? Are we seeing the benefits that we need to see for students? If we're putting in this money, is it being accessible? Do, does it eliminate some of the barriers that, that normally, you know, if students can't come because of family obligations, then not enough, I mean, you can't throw enough money at that problem, right? So how is it that we are actually using this money effectively? And is it being used effectively in these sports? And if it's not, then where can it be used effectively, right? Like as Pedro said, you know, in Cheer, right? They've, they've applied for that grant. The marching band has applied for a grant. You know, all of these people have applied for this grant. And they're asking, are we going to have money for next year? And they don't know if they are. So, and that increases their participation. I mean, in Color Guard alone, there's a big participation of students that belong to GSA. They feel welcome in that, in that program. They feel welcome in theater. Why aren't we investing our funds into those programs? People are going to play sports whether we, they have money or not. They're going to, I mean, they're going to play them because they're, it's just something that if you are willing to do it, you're going to try and do it, right? And, and then you can get help doing it if, if you don't have access to those funds. But with other, other things that have the same benefit as sports and are not being funded correctly, then how can we use these monies that are being allocated to this maybe non-existent problem that we thought maybe was existing? So is it a problem? Is it not? That's kind of what I wanted to get out of this. And I don't know that I did.
I talk really loud, so I'm scared. I think one of my biggest things when I look at after school sports is what can we do in school during school hours? One of my like, one of my biggest like sadnesses is that there isn't like a woman only weight training class. I did not do weight training a second year because I did not feel comfortable being in a class of a majority of like male students who, it, it was like a very, very small group of female students who all worked out together in the corner to like, in a way like hide ourselves from the teacher and the other students. And I wish we had more female PE teachers and more classes that were aimed towards female students so that they could feel more comfortable doing sports. Because I feel like if we're not supporting students in school, they're not going to go transition to out of school. And they're not going to go do sports outside of school.
So just a couple of thoughts. One was, I, I just wonder about first, what's the low hanging fruit? What, what can we first do? And there were so many comments about the registration process being a barrier. And like there was like ten percent of, of kids that, that reflected that. And I wonder if that's a low hanging fruit piece that, you know, that would be a huge percentage of kids that felt that that barrier may decrease. And then, and then the chair sort of mentioned this already, but when you were talking about what are the opportunities for younger kids? I started thinking, well, how young are we talking? Are we talking down into elementary school? But are we mostly talking middle school? And would that then impact the confidence level that kids feel at high school? Because if that is a barrier. And then what is our role as a board? And, and what would be the ask for us as board in, in supporting that? Clearly that would be budgetary request, but there may be other programmatic requests as well. But I would be in full support of having a big conversation about middle school sports. And, and how young are we, are we talking? Because extracurricular activities for all ages of kids is beneficial. So, so thanks for that and all the information.
All right, so I have a few comments. I like the idea of having opportunities available for younger students. I don't think it's just a confidence issue. I think if kids that play sports for many years are learning something and it is hard to bridge that gap, although of course confidence might be an issue too. And I hear the, the comment from Director Heimiz about, you know, what is the best use? And I, I know with middle school, say we added middle school sports, I'm not sure how that would work with our community. We have all these great youth organizations already existing. And so it would seem more equitable to me to provide some kind of scholarship opportunity and say, go do the thing you love, whatever that is, instead of trying to figure out what students want. Just provide that opportunity. Do you want to go do dance? Do you want to go do theater? Do you want to do soccer all summer or whatever it is? Aside from that, I think girls' sports deserves a lot of attention. Women couldn't even play sports historically for quite some time. And so I think there's a lot of catching up to do, particularly for women's sports. And I think we have a ways to go on that. And it's something our female students want to do. And so it's just a matter of opening up that opportunity and that, that's a real shame about the weightlifting class as well. I also want to, I like the snacks. I think those are really helpful, especially you get to school early. The day is really long, seven, eight o'clock. Kids have a lot of fun when there's snacks before or after practice. I know the soccer teams done a really good job with that. And I'm sure some of the other teams that I'm not aware of. So I just wanted to mention that. Thanks.
I think one thing I noticed that was still to be mentioned at all is the fact that, I think a really big majority is not only the reason why people in GSA are saying that they're uncomfortable with sports, sports, but in general, is, is that sports are so gendered. And so sometimes like there, there are a lot of students, even just like students who just are trans. Like as a trans man, if I even was interested in sports, which I couldn't even do at Creekside that I know of. But I know that I would be terrified to be on a team with a bunch of guys or on a team with girls because that's not mean. So like, I think that that might be something to look into and maybe work on a little bit. It's trying to figure out how it can be more comfortable for, for people who aren't just strict and cis.
We talked, in the survey, it said the sports that had the most, I think, students who wanted to participate were the ones that had the biggest programs in our community. And those are moneymakers. And they're using our fields and they're using our spaces that are in our community. And that's an untapped resource. I don't know how to get access to that. I've thought about it. I have kids in sports and I've seen, okay, how many kids are participating? You pay fifteen hundred dollars a season. Multiply that by five hundred kids. It's a moneymaking machine and they're taking advantage of our family and our facilities and our fields. And I don't know how we can tap into getting them to partner with us somehow because really it's not even at middle school. There are kids who are playing competitive sports in first grade and second grade. Soon can't even participate in middle school. So I don't know. That's for me a big elephant in the room that I see.
Go Jill.
So one of the things that really resonated with me, and Atticus's comment is, is part of it. I like, I really like the idea of what several students mentioned about different sports, new sports that we haven't done before. And I'm thinking if we started a new team, like a badminton team or a disc golf team, we could start it as a, a non-sexed team, right? It can be, anybody can be on it. And it has the benefit of having none of those preconceived ideas of, well, you have to have started it in middle school or grade school. And so there can be a, a sense of it's new, anybody can come in. And that might help break down some of those barriers, particularly if it's one that doesn't have a lot of equipment and, and gear that the students have to wear specific in order to do. So there's, there's an opportunity there that I kind of think could solve a couple of problems at the same time.
I just wanted to kind of echo, I wanted to echo Atticus's statement, especially as an intersex student in that co-ed sports are really awesome. I of course would also prefer more like focus on women's sports. But I also think like students like me who biologically are both male and female, have a very hard time figuring out where we fit in to sports. So I just wanted to echo that point of, I completely agree. We need to figure out how we're going to be more accessible to students who do not fit those kind of binary two cis genders.
And then Chair, I have one more thing to say as a wrap up. And then, so I want Pedro to say something first and then I'll close out.
So I mean, some of the things that we have seen so far since we started the no pay to play, we have seen other teams venture into the no cut. Kind of started off with some of the JV two team from the girl's soccer program at our school. But in just this year, we had seventy boys come out for soccer. That's the most that program's ever had. So I mean, if you take fifteen kids per, fifteen boys per team, that's more than three teams. So just finding time to kind of have that extra coach. So those are some things that are coming on as far as like how much do we pay a JV two coach? And then also the boys' basketball team also just added this year, a JV two team for the boys' basketball. So we are seeing those numbers go up as far as, and also the word get out about we don't have to pay to play or come out with tryout.
And then in the presentation, you'll see some barriers and some continued work. But I also want to remind, I think everyone here, but also in our institution, the way that we talk frames our thinking, guides our action and our outcome. And sometimes when we think about changes, we think about perfection. We think about something happening overnight. Whereas what I hope is taken out of this conversation is when you are able to study and learn a little bit more, not only are you able to see some of the low hanging fruit, but you're also able to see the deep rooted causes of some of these things. Without focused attention and people that are working in the local level to understand that, we're going to have the same conversation over and over again. But what I want to highlight is that we had a different type of conversation today. And one of the things, and I appreciate you bringing that up Atticus, is as we have our coordinators in athletics, we also did, did an audit that I, I shared with all of you board members related to our gender expansive audit for our district. And that was part of the conversation within that work. And so without folks like our coordinators here and the, our students advocating for some of those components, we also don't see change happen. So I want to like challenge us to think a little bit less about perfection and more about persistence and perspective.
And quickly before I adjourn, which I will, and I appreciate everyone for taking this extra time, I will work with Zinnia and the crew and the, everyone involved to try and get something so we don't wait for another year or another update and have sort of a rushed conversation. Because I really do think this takes some time and some care and some thought to really think about how, instead of having these great conversations and then letting it sit, how, what are the next action steps for us? And like Director Miles says, sort of what can we do as a board? How can we support? What can we get the community involved in? What conversations can tie into budget conversations? All of those different pieces. And so just know that I'll be reaching out to kind of figure out if it's a separate work session altogether, if it's a committee group, what we can do to, to keep this conversation fresh. And without, anybody else want to comment? All right, and with that, I will adjourn the work session at six fifteen PM.